There it is, right there it is. You gotta push your red button down.
It's down.
Okay. What hitting that thing? Yeah, pull it down. Kathy, would you smack her?
I hit it and you told me to put it down, it was down.
I'll pull it down now so it'll pick you up.
Alright guys. Help me down. Help you, they weren't mean to smack you. I want you to smack them.
Oh, mercy. Oh, I'm already muted, I had all my stuff already muted. No wonder I haven't been getting any calls today. Oh, my goodness.
You got it on airplane mode?
No, I had my, I had my sound, I've got eight missed calls. Oh, boy. I know what I'm gonna, I know what I'm gonna be doing the rest of the evening.
Yep.
Going through more, going through my calls.
Hey, I want you to hit that button.
Do you have the thing in your little laptop?
Uh-oh, that microphone.
Yeah, we got, we got dead batteries.
You got a dead battery in that microphone. And it just keep getting louder and louder.
Oh, my.
When the speakers go boof, that's, that'd be it.
Looks like it needs one and something else.
When the speakers go boof, that'll be it.
I give up on technology, it's all yours.
Do you need some batteries for that?
We need batteries for that, we need whatever's that, I don't know, but anyways.
Well, I tell you what, we'll just go ahead and go with our meeting, won't worry about it.
Go the old fashioned way.
Okay, I'm gonna call this, uh, Monday, June the 12th, 2023, Chandler Advisory Planning Committee Meeting to order with the roll call, please.
Crowley Cup.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Whitledge.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Okay, we have all but one member present, so we have a quorum. If you would, please, let's all stand and, uh, remove our head coverings and say Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item. Approval of minutes for the May 8th, 2023 meeting. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? I didn't see anything that looked out of place.
No, I didn't see either.
Okay, I will accept a motion to approve the Chandler Planning Commission regular meeting for May 8th, 2023.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, roll call, please.
Crowley Cup.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Whitledge.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Alright, next order of business. Discussion and approval of new permits. We have permits from May 5th through June 9th, 2023. Anybody see anything they, question, comment?
I couldn't, I didn't see anything for.
Okay, if we don't have any questions or comments on the permits, let's turn our attention to the inspection log. See if we have any, if there's any questions.
We muted through a month with no failures.
Have inspection log for the same period of time, May 5th through June 9th. I looked at him earlier, I didn't see anything. That being the case, I will entertain motions to approve the permit log and the inspection log for May 8th, May 5th through June 9th, 2023.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, roll call, please.
Crowley Cup.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Whitledge.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Okay, now, I think, uh, I'd like to, on advisement, I'd like to move things up a little bit on our agenda, or change things up a little bit. We have, uh, a gentleman from M&amp;M Properties that, uh, proposed retirement community over on Gardner Road. I'd like to move them up to now, so they don't have to keep sitting there for all the boring stuff. Or any more of the boring stuff. So, gentlemen, floor is yours. Oh, you're not M&amp;M?
Oh, it's us.
Oh, okay. Well, the floor is yours.
Were you able to take, to get some parts out to them?
Yes, they have a copy of things that we talked about. They were, usually someone stands here at this desk so they can be heard. There's batteries?
Oh.
Well, I've never changed batteries in that device, I suppose there's, um...
I don't think you have a problem hearing this. It's a matter of public record. Anyone else ever changed these batteries?
No, you just go plus to plus and minus to minus.
Yeah, but you gotta get it open first. Gotta get the kit opener up.
I don't know how you open it.
There you go.
I just follow the little plus and minus signs, huh? I don't know whether I get it right or not.
Hold on that string, that'll pull the batteries out.
If I could see a string.
Somebody did put it in there.
Somebody probably.
Put it in there and wrapped the string underneath of it.
That's what I hate about them battery operator deals, they run the batteries down.
Well, really, they should be just about time. After, after every time you use them, you should take them out.
Be nice with that. The things would be, you know, where you could just set them and get them on and, and charge them, you know?
While they're in the mic?
Yeah, just leave them in the mic, you know, and set it down and charge it.
Okay.
Just like, uh, all the people's hearing aids and stuff is.
Right. I have been speaking with Matt, I'm sorry, Marty, Matt Martin. Hence, we have M&amp;M Properties, Matt Martin. And that's where they're gonna explain their vision that they have for a retirement community that we have annexed basically on Gardner Road.
Voluntarily.
Voluntarily annexed. And, uh, is that about 11.75 acre lot?
Yeah, 11.88 is a special number.
So, it's on the south side, I know I've been questioned as to where it is. If you travel down State Street to Gardner and turn right, it'll be down on the left-hand side. It's between State Street and Fuquay, it's on the south side. It's confusing, I, I confuse people, because I call it the South Gardner Project. And Gardner runs east and west. So, uh, it's 7133.
It's also west of, uh, Russell, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
West of Russell, yeah.
Between Russell and.
It's 7133 for maybe your purposes to basically identify where we are. So, having kind of identified where we are and letting you know we've spoken, they've shared plans. Uh, I've talked with, uh, Josh Claiborne with regards to their project and he has given a green light. When we annexed that, it defaulted to an R1, so they have, uh, already, uh, the zoning needed to build residential homes on that property. So, what we're asking is that this, uh, body will just kind of review these plans and, uh, give them approval of this, um, project. And, uh, there's 14 homes, is there not?
Yeah, probably.
So, uh, I think some of us would actually wanna learn more about this, we might even wanna rent off of you one day. So, maybe you can take it from there.
Yeah, so we plan on about 55 older community and, uh, there'll be single level homes with, uh, three bedrooms and two car garages, they'll be nice, they'll be nice homes. And then Matt plans on doing most of the work with this construction company, Schultz. Schultz Construction. And, uh, yeah, it's a, it's a beautiful location, it's a real nice place. The first row of houses will be, uh, toward the right side of the road and when you go out your back door, with your back porch, you'll be able to go over the stream, looking over the stream and looking over the woods.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, I want that one.
The first, uh, I think like seven that we built will be facing, facing the stream.
Oh, my goodness. Now, are they all single, single dwellings, not connected in any way? Okay.
That's right, about 30 feet apart, like normal subdivision. Yeah, uh, we, we plan on having a mix of, uh, rock or brick or rocky and brick for the front, and the most of it would be siding, but the front would probably be nice. All different colors.
Now, I'm gonna ask the stupid question.
You've, you've got these.
I've got, yeah, we've got pretty good.
If you're going out State Street, do you turn right onto?
Yes.
Yeah, on Gardner.
And it'll be on the south side, on north side of Gardner Road.
On the left side.
Okay.
South side of Gardner.
South, south side of Gardner.
South side of Gardner, on the left, as you're going west.
Yeah, south side, that's right, that's right. Right past Russell Road, it'd be on your left.
They have the distinction of being the only property on the south side of Gardner that's a part of Chandler right now. I think that's correct. Residential property, anyway.
Now, is it two full baths or two and a half baths?
Yeah.
Two full baths, okay. I, I was down here looking really close, I couldn't tell if they're lap bathed in there or not.
Two meetings ago, okay.
And when do you think this, these will be ready for rent? What, what's your? Okay, and then, how long do you think it'd take to get the first seven going? A one at a time and rental? Okay, one at a time.
Now, you're gonna go ahead and put the, put the street in and put the pads in for all of them?
So, we're gonna go ahead and put the street in as, as far as rock, because we get prior road.
Right, right.
And, uh, once we fully develop the whole thing, we pave it, you know?
Right, but I mean, you're gonna do the whole, when you do the, the initial excavation, you're gonna go ahead and put the rough cut for the whole street and for your building pads.
Yeah.
Things like that, have all, all that done at one time.
Yeah, uh, so Jake, uh, you guys know Jake, um, Jake Bieber.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, he'll be, he'll probably be the guy who'll be doing, doing the, uh, the road work and a lot of that stuff. And he was talking about just doing as far as, you know, uh, one house after next kind of a thing.
Yeah.
And then until we, you know, fill them up and, uh, finish the road.
Yeah, finish paving.
Yeah.
Curbing gutter?
I'm not sure.
Uh, Glenn from Cash Wagner is their engineer.
So, there's something going to be a town road. It will be not, it will not be now, ever. They will never, once it's fully developed. If you got to annex it or something like that, we wouldn't have a problem with it down the road. We plan on making the gravel at first and, and letting the gravel, you know, seat, get a good bed before we put concrete in there, well, let's worry about cracking and all that.
So, that, this is going to be a complex of like 11 acres, that? More or less a complex?
Well, it's really more like the first front four acres, we'll have the houses on it.
Oh, okay, alright.
And the back is woods and hills and, and, uh, if we develop that at all, it's way down the road. Did you buy the entire property? Did you buy his house and everything? No. No, no, just the, uh, front 12 acres.
Are you doing sidewalks in front of the houses or just right now, just know?
Well, they're only 25 feet from, from the road and being a private road.
Okay.
We were thinking about doing walking trails and maybe go our paths and stuff like that.
Yeah, that would be better. Okay.
It's a cul-de-sac, so we don't expect a lot of traffic.
Okay.
Being a private street and being a, you know, have a retirement free.
Alright, I have, I have one question here now.
Yeah.
It's 55 or plus, right?
55 and above.
Okay. What if you get X number of houses built and you don't get them rented? Are they just, are, are you gonna rent them? Will, will you be going to anybody below 55?
We might, I don't know, that, that would, uh, I, here, we're looking like the baby boomers are getting ready to start downsizing in droves.
Well, yeah.
They're gonna come out of Evansville, they're gonna come out of Los Angeles, they're gonna come out of New York, they're gonna come out of all these big cities and they're gonna look for a place that's gonna be nice and quiet and this is gonna be a nice, quiet, small-town feel and it's gonna be nice and I don't think they're gonna be trying.
I don't think so either.
Well, it's like I say, I, I've always asked that same question. There's been other times where the 55 and plus has been, you know, wanting to get, come in town and stuff like this and, you know, like apartments or something like this, you know? And, uh, I've always asked the question, what happens if you can't rent these out to 55 and plus?
I guess we'd have to talk to you guys.
Unless, you know, what I'm saying is, oh, let's say you had half of them rented out or something.
This one, right.
And, uh, the other half you couldn't. So, uh, you start renting them out to people, maybe lower down, some with kids and everything else.
Really not what we wanna do, we, we don't want the young families, young kids.
Well, I, I think, I think we need, I think we need some kind of a covenant or something when you do start building to that possibility, I don't know, but, uh, what I'm afraid of is, is you start out at 55 plus and then all of a sudden you can't go to 55 plus, you have to go lower, you go down to people, you know, and they wind up partying or doing stuff like this. The older ones then says, hey, we bought, we, we come in here with this.
I party, I party and I'm 55 plus.
Okay, forget it. I'm, I'm beating my head against the dang wall with these people here, I'll carry, take it. I'm beating my head against the wall.
I feel like these will be brand new, you know, how, how. They're gonna be lucky, they're gonna be lucky. I think they're gonna be snatching them up.
Yeah. Yeah, with just 14 of them, I think it'll go quick. Yeah, you're right.
55 and over is very, very safe, though.
Yeah, right.
You can't ever guarantee that, hey, the bracket's going up, I see that.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
You can't ever guarantee, we can't ever hope somebody's wanting to build these.
You, you can't ever guarantee that people 55 and up isn't gonna have a bunch of kids in there.
And, and you can't, 15 daddy down the road, you may not have anybody there 55 and plus in there, they may only be 25 and 30.
I would suspect that the rent that owns. Well, the rent, the rent, the rent's gonna keep a certain kind of.
Right.
Yeah.
That's the rent level. These houses are gonna be, this is gonna be quite expensive.
This, this is a private, this is a private, uh, affair, it's not government and, uh...
No.
It's not like that deal with Helen Group and their, and their developments. Yeah, we're no Section 8 or anything like that, we're not going down that road.
Yeah. There, there are ways to handle this, my mother-in-law lives in a place somewhere where they're not allowed to smoke, they're not even allowed to have pads, it's pretty strict. So, you can set some rules when it's private and, uh, you can control these things.
I wanna see that.
And I, I think there's a waiting list of months to get in where she's at, so I don't think there's any problem.
I don't think there'd be a problem, 14 of them will go in hard.
Kathy's got hers picked out over here.
Yeah, I've got mine already marked.
Are we, are we going, are we gonna get a layout before we do anything, a plot layout?
It's on the page right there.
Well, this don't show me nothing. This don't show me nothing.
It doesn't show what everything I wanna see either.
No, it don't show me lot sizes, it don't show me, uh, I mean, it tells me where the road's gonna be and approximately where the houses are and if I get down there and read, I might be able to tell where all the hills and hollers are. But that's, that's not what I'm saying, just a flat deal.
That's just an idea, I mean, we haven't gone, we haven't gone that far with the engineer, just in case we gotta, you know.
That's what I'm saying, I, I.
They, they, they will be presenting, uh, to the stormwater department also a SWIP plan and that's part of the requirement.
Need a plot layout, you know? And I don't know, uh, what size lot, what size lots are you talking about?
So, these, these houses are about 34 by 62, I, I just think that's what they are and they're 30 feet apart, so you're looking at, you're looking at lots being 60 some odd feet wide by 100 feet deep.
Well, I mean, yeah.
I mean.
But you're not gonna sell them.
No.
No, that's exactly why they're not plotted out.
That's what I'm saying.
There's one piece of property here.
It's one piece of property.
Right.
It's not settled.
Right.
We're not, we're not, we're not building them themselves, so.
Right.
Keep them all together and.
Yeah, I mean, I, how much the rent would be?
Roughly?
Roughly.
$2,000 plus, probably around that, that range.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's where there's that barrier of letting people going in.
Oh, yeah. There, there's, there's some homes in Heimridge that's going for $2,000 or more.
Oh, yeah.
Heimridge.
Thank you.
Price of nursing home.
What do we need from us today? I, I kinda came in late for the game, what is this, just a proposal that you want us to consider to annex this area?
It's already annexed.
Already annexed.
It's already, it's all ready to go.
I wanna see, I wanna see a plot deal, that's what I wanna see, for all okay anything.
So.
Consensus wise, I, I think it's a good deal, but other than that, well.
We probably need to speak with Glenn and, uh, on the SWIP plan that will be developed, he'll also be addressing where those houses will be. So, out of that SWIP plan, there will emerge a site plan that, that Ray is asking for. So, it's basically one and the same in, in that regard that will give them the location of these properties. So, on that SWIP plan that Glenn will draw up, it will satisfy what their question would be, I believe. And so, are you saying that you're just, uh, you just wanna see this lot more vividly described, is that correct?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean.
Okay, let's clarify something here, on the houses themselves, do you have any question on the houses? The footages or?
Sir, everything's gonna be private, your water line's probably gonna be private.
Private.
Yeah.
You're not gonna have separate meters of each house. Uh, we are, yeah.
Well, you almost have to have probably separate meters, but whatever.
Rob has been involved with this, uh, that's one of the reasons why there has been a change in, well, there was another plan and it has been changed in, with regard to utilities, if I understand it right. And, uh, there's been, there's been conversations with our utilities that they're, they're involved with this decision process.
Well, I know we got a four-inch man runs back that house.
There's two different, there's two different sizes. Two different designs, they're same size.
Yeah.
They're two different designs.
Well, okay, whatever.
I believe that are same size.
I don't know.
Well, it's the last.
Yeah, they ran a fire, fire and all the way up to the house, you know, along the side of our property.
I mean, how can you change the front part of it without changing these two here?
Very easily. That's just, that's just gingerbread.
Looky here. You got one town, one hill here, you got two of them here.
But that's still coming off of.
That makes it whiter.
No, it does not. It does not. It won't make the footprint any wider.
I hear discussion about the houses.
Well, they have a question, you have, you, you've, uh, got two front elevations. So, that, that's what you're gonna have.
That's just retaining the looks.
Is, you're gonna have two styles?
Yes.
Okay, same size footprint, you've got one.
Correct.
Same, that's what, that's what Ray was asking.
And they'll be breaks in stone.
Right. But the same size, same size footprint.
Right, okay, okay.
It's.
And it gives you one another, it'll change that color. Yeah.
Yeah. Right, right, right.
We don't want Kathy going to the wrong house tonight.
After I party with Ron, no, no.
So.
It's got a rock front and we're gonna have a gas fire place on the wall, so we're, it's brick in the front and we'll have a brick, uh, gas fire place.
So, for, for tonight's meeting then, if I'm, if I'm catching this right, because I have, I do have questions and concerns about the overall, uh, development. But for tonight's meeting, um, would it suffice to say that we're just here to approve the floor plan and the elevations? Is that all for tonight?
If you approve that, that would be a good step because the stormwater permit, or this, the stormwater pollution protection plan is a plan that Glenn with Cash Wagner will create. That plan has to be approved by the state and myself as the stormwater director. So, that approval has to happen in addition to.
Before anything else can happen, more or less.
In addition to, we can do this simultaneously. So, tonight, if you could approve these floor plans and these elevations, then that would be a good step. And then, when we come back, we can go ahead and put the final approval, uh, on the, uh, the plan, the site plan.
Okay. I'm good with that.
So, I, I suppose that there would be, uh, maybe a request for, uh, a motion to approve the floor plan and the houses as proposed by M&amp;M Construction and, um...
This is a floor plan.
That would be, uh, a step forward and then we'll get the stormwater pollution prevention plan. Finished with. And, and by doing that, that gives them confidence that they can go ahead and spend money and not have to worry.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm, like I said, guys, I, I do have some, some concerns about. I, I'm, I'm, the floor plan, I'm okay with the floor plan, the elevations. I haven't had a chance to really look at a whole lot of the topography on the, uh, uh, because it's still small, I couldn't, I couldn't really decipher a whole lot of that. But that, that'll go in conjunction with the plan that Michael's talking about.
Sure. I've, I've, I've been.
The, the stormwater flows and, and this, that and the other, which that's coming at the next juncture.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I encourage you just to drive by, take a peek at it, I've actually been there, drove the truck down the proposed street area and tried to get a feel for the property, so, um, yeah, just, I think.
It runs through the property on the back end, where the property line is kinda like?
Yes.
That's where the main also runs right along with that. And that's where the backside of that, uh, south, south end street would be. So, where's the driveway in relation to, it's right here, the driveway go up to the house?
See, there's no way to tell, tell them what the driveway is.
No, you're talking about the driveway to the existing house.
Yeah, but what I'm saying.
We don't need to know that.
Well, I do need to know what, but they got it.
He's talking about the driveway to the existing house that's there.
Well, the existing, where's the existing house?
It's sitting back here somewhere.
It might be good to explain this small driveway that you might.
Okay.
See, this is Gardner Road.
Perhaps, to help you understand this drawing even further, maybe Matt could share why there's just a small driveway over here.
So, on that, uh, west end, you'll see that drive and that, that gets us to the backside of the, of the 12 acres. So, this community is on the front four acres of it. So, that just gives us right away to, uh, to later on, if we wanna split that up into two lots or, or whatever, uh, we might need it there. Yeah, so, and then on the other end, on that, uh, east end, that's the driveway to get to the back of that existing house.
Over here then, yeah, over here. That's the east end over here. This is the west end.
Okay, well, I will, I will entertain motions at this point, if we're all clear. Uh, I will entertain motions to accept, um, floor plan, uh, wall section, they all look standard, uh, front and, front and all other elevations for this, uh, for this subdivision project.
I'll make the motion.
A motion and a second.
Jason, did you say?
Jason, Brian, say. Uh, roll call, please.
Brock, Crowley.
Yes.
Cup.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Whitlidge.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Okay, well, you got that, you're, you're hurdle number two, you've, you've already got the annexation, so.
You're out, you're out of the gate. You've, you've got zoning, you've got an annexation, you've got the approval of the house, we just have to work on the storm plan and the site plan.
And the site.
The next, this next meeting is, uh, the second Monday of July. There's a stormwater board meeting the fourth Monday of this month at six o'clock. Yeah, that'd be a good time for you to bring the SWIP plan finalized, if you, if, if you can get that finalized by, uh, the fourth, I don't know, I'm losing track of time, this is a, that's the, and so I don't, I don't know what Glenn can do for it.
Yeah, it only takes a couple days.
Yeah, so if we could, if we could get the stormwater issue, and then that would be approved at the fourth meeting, and then come back here to satisfy this site plan question at the next meeting, so. Basically, it looks like if things would fall into place, you'd be a month away from putting the shovel on the ground. As far as we're concerned.
Fourth Monday?
Yes, I don't have my calendar, I do, but I haven't. It would be June twenty-sixth, and that, that's here at six o'clock.
In that room over there?
No. Yeah, we, we've been meeting over in that smaller, because it's a smaller meeting.
Okay.
There's only three people on the board. Any questions, give me a call, or Glenn, either one.
Are you gonna have a name for this, like, some kinda?
We're coming up with something. We have wires, so it's not.
I understand, need to say no more.
These people that developed, uh, Emmy June Cove Keller Development Company out of Fort Wayne, they have developments all over the state and they name them after family members, so Emmy June Cove is after a three-year-old niece, so.
Well, Fisher's, I think, only named theirs about that.
Well, thanks, gentlemen, appreciate you coming.
All right.
You too.
Much, man, talk to you later, Matt.
All right, I'll see you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's continue with our agenda, move up to old business.
Um, old business.
Nuisance properties update and two thousand forty-five strategic plan update.
Well, nuisance properties, I apologize that we could not get the screens to work this evening, I had pictures to share. Last Wednesday, we went to eight sixteen East Washington Street and, uh, MCF Construction helped us to take away two large truckloads, and I felt like it was a successful morning, and things went pretty well. When you go to people's yards and start taking away things, that can sometimes, well, you know what that be, it might be like. But, uh, I, I don't know if you've driven by there and looked at it, but, um.
Are we talking about the one on Iowa Street?
No, eight sixteen East Washington Street. It's, um, a home that's been a problem for a long time, and, uh, we.
It's the first time a dad house up there.
We were able to, uh, I think, make a huge improvement, uh, we, uh.
Did they get to do any tree trimming?
Yes, we took away a bunch of bushes.
Good.
Um, we sawed and we did some weed eating and some sawing of the tree branches, and you can see the house now if you drive by, and, uh, we arranged a few things that we just felt like, you know, we're gonna leave these things, and, uh, there was a little apparatus that was padlocked to the tree, we kinda left, we just hadn't, and then there's a boat. There's a vehicle there that's abandoned, well, the vehicle was tagged by the police department, and so she went and got plates and got it insured, and it does not run. So I notified the police department and, um, they, I don't know what happened, I left that in their, their court. That's up to them, what they do with that vehicle. Uh, I know it's still there, I was by there this morning, so that, that old red truck is still there. We cleaned all the debris out the back, we, out, out the back of it, we got it ready to tow, but they did not tow it, and that's between the police department and, and, uh, Roberta. So Roberta Denison and the police department, however that works out, that's, that's theirs. But we did, uh, it was, it was amazing, it's amazing what people, this one illustration on the side of the house, you know, it's milk carton crates, and she had sixteen milk carton crates full of old food outside with the tarp over it. And, uh, that's, uh, just one illustration, so we worked hard on that property, and then we went over to two oh two North Kentucky. Things got a little challenging there, um, we had police department that came and thought we had everything kinda okay, and then things got rough. The police department came back, thought we had it settled down, and, and then the police department had to come back and they called for the county to kinda come in and help a little bit. So we had, uh, county and the police department, and it got, it got challenging, I stayed with the, with the contractors all day long, they were good, MCF was really good. Those guys, uh, stayed back, they, uh, they behaved well under those circumstances, because it's very stressful. Uh, Jordan was a police officer on duty that day, you can, yeah, yeah, and, uh, but here's what I'm getting at. Uh, that house, we took two loads away from that house, uh, we did, we took away the, I wanna call it apparatus in the front yard that was there. I don't know, uh, some kinda playground equipment, and they were, they got pretty challenging with like, uh, you're not gonna take that away. It's like, lady, this is unsafe, that, and her reply was, that's been there for over thirty years. It's been there longer than I've been alive, and I'm like, that's why it needs to go. And, um, it was, uh, I, we stood our ground, we took it out, and, uh, to their, um, well, again, we were being challenged. So, uh, we took two loads of debris from the front yard. I, uh, was, uh, they were, they, they threw a really fit, big fit when I started headed to the backyard, and I took pictures of the backyard, we didn't get there till afternoon, it was after, it was like twelve-thirty and we started demoing that house, or that, taking away that stuff. And at twelve-thirty, um, of course, we didn't have a whole lot of time in the day, we did all we could, uh, took two loads away in that time. And, um, but, uh, I took pictures of the backyard and, uh, it, it, it's terrible, there's siding off the back of the house, the deck in the back is broken to the point where it's like, the, the man that was there, his name was Jeff, and he's like, oh, I'm gonna repair, I said, Jeff, I've been in construction over thirty-five years, some things you can repair, some things you cannot. This cannot be repaired, it has to go, there's no freezer in the backyard, siding again's off the house, there's no building back there. Beyond, beyond what we could do, beyond what we could do. Furthermore, there's five children, number six is on the way, four adults, and they're all living in that little place. So, uh, Jordan, she went ahead and, and contacted, uh, the child services, uh, she did, she did that on her own, she's like, it's gotta be done. And, um, I walked over, for example, to, uh, there was a pizza box on the ground, and I walked over to pick up that pizza box, and when I picked it up, it was what was covering the sewer, and it, it looks like an eight-inch sewer pipe with no cap on it. And, um, I picked that up, it's like, oh my goodness, and, uh, I talked to the, to the man there, Jeff, he, oh, that's been that way for years. And, oh my, and the kids were in a swing, they were eating something out of a bowl five or six feet away from that open sewer thing there. It's just beyond what really humans should be living in. So, uh, we're at a point now, I, I talked to Jordan this morning, it's like, well, let's see what the Child Protection Services does, because where will those people go, what will they do? Probably the thing I would like to do is condemn the house, tear it now with the, I mean, just wipe it out, it's, there's nothing there to save, nothing there. It needs to be just taken out, so then you've got the human involved, it's like, well, where are these kids gonna go, what are they gonna do? They really need to be put in probably foster care, uh, one of their teachers talked to me yesterday, they, they attend my church, one of the teachers, and I got a little insight as to, so, so it's a big, big, it's a bigger picture than what, than just abate nuisance. It's a bigger picture than just a bait nuisance, so there's a lot of elements here to consider, and we're working our way through that. So, uh, I think we made some progress, and, and quite honestly, I think I got on a level page with a couple of them there. I went back, the, uh, the interesting thing is, yesterday, we had a little bit of wind, you know, their old rotten tree in the front of the house fell over on their van. And I was by there yesterday, or by today, and I talked to Jeff, he was cool, and I, he was like waiting on his insurance adjuster, and, uh, so, that's.
The house is insured?
Well, I'm just telling you, he was waiting on his insurance adjuster. Is it insured? I don't know, I'm just, I'm just the messenger boy here, and I'm telling you what I'm saying. Yeah, and. I, I felt, I felt for him in, in a sense there, that tree, it came down and it, it, that van's not going anywhere. And so, uh, they've got, their problems are, I mean, we, we went there and took away their playground equipment they've had for over thirty years. The trees fell across the van, Childs Protection Services is on the way, so they've got, they're gonna have their hands full this week.
Van that it fell on, the one parked in the street?
This van was white, I, I can't tell you any more than that. The black one stays there a lot, I don't know this white van, I'm not sure I've recognized it, may not even be, who knows, who knows these? This is a very complicated situation, who knows? So we're, we're doing our best to work in conjunction with Child Protection Services, with the police department, and, uh, we wanna do something about this property, and so we'll continue to work with that. As far as two-ten North Iowa, uh, I'm encouraged by that, there's a piece of equipment sitting in the backyard, there's a large dumpster, things are on the move.
Yeah.
Things are on the move, so.
They got a small excavator in the backyard there, it's like the fence is coming down.
So two-ten North Iowa was, is going good, eight sixteen got cleaned up, I think, pretty good, two-oh-two is a work in progress, that's what I know.
Two out of three's not bad then.
Two-oh-two North Kentucky, just listening to your story, it, like you said, those people have got deeper problems than cleaning up property and making it a nice thing, is there something that we can maybe point them in the right direction? Because I mean, obviously, having your children taken away, your possessions crushed and destroyed, your vehicle, I mean, there's a lot going on right there for.
There is.
Can we? I don't know how to say this, but to help those folks.
Well.
We don't necessarily have to pay for it, but out of the goodness that we are to do for other humans.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, is there some, I mean, those people need help, you know?
I'm hoping Child Protection can help give guidance, you know?
Church.
Uh, you know, if, if, in all reality of Child Protection would take the children, and then the adults could possibly find a place to go, and then we could maybe take that house out and clean that property up. Uh, I think that would, you know, and so those, pointing in the right direction, I'm with you, I, I really am. I mean, I went home that night, that was what I was thinking about when I went to bed, uh, we do our job. But, uh, yeah, trying to give them some guidance, and I, I guess I would tell you, I, I love people, and that's my job, you know, I'm a pastor too. And I made it, I'll just tell you this much, the guy that was cursing me and shouting at me and giving me such a hard time, by the end of the day, we were sitting down talking like civil people. And so, uh, you know, it makes my heart cry, uh, for those folk. Uh, and just like today, I went by there again, I spoke with him about his, his, his vehicle, I don't know whose vehicle was, somebody, somebody's vehicle got crushed. And, um, so, uh, I was, you know, empathizing with him, and, uh, and work, and, and Jordan likewise, she texted me, she's the one that texted me and said, you know, there's a tree on the car, and so I went over there, which I really had no obligation to do that, that's, that's their thing. So I say that to tell you, uh, yeah, to point them in a, in a right way, um, I, I will do my best, and I think there's others in the community that likewise will try to do their best, because there are, are five children, or five children, who are innocent and was born into that, and, um, they're, the, the, one of the boys is very angry, he has a lot of problems, and I can understand why, uh, so.
Probably has to fight for everything he can get, probably.
Yeah.
Are they still a lot yours that live there? Do you know?
Donna, I can only tell you there's five children, and the lady's pregnant, she's got one on the way, and there's four adults, that's what I was told. Who?
I think Tommy, young, Tom's senior son, Tommy, little Tommy.
Yeah.
How old would Tommy be?
Tommy's probably about forty, mid-forties, thirty, maybe.
I think he's been kicked out, that's my guess, I could be wrong, because that's who I tried to communicate with first off, and then, uh, I believe, I believe, Brian, she said, he's no longer here, Jeff is here.
Jeff, I don't know.
Maybe dug his way out and got going, but.
And, uh, Terry is the grandma, I think, and she called, wanted to talk with me, and uh, we set up an appointment to talk on Friday afternoon at three o'clock, she called and canceled, said she'd call me this week and see.
Now, his wife might still be alive, she'd probably be in her seventies.
Yeah.
Tom's senior's wife.
Yeah, yeah, at least.
Yeah.
The lady who wants to talk to me, they call her Terry, I know she's older, and she lives in a mobile home, and she's not healthy.
Yeah, it sounds like that might, yeah, I think her name was Terry.
And it's very complicated because this child I know that's very angry, I, I, I talked to his teacher, and, um, the teacher, uh, told me that when they had to take care of, like, you know, you have to have things signed by a legal guardian, that actually, I believe, of his grandma is actually the legal guardian, because nobody wants him. And, uh.
I know the family, I just.
Yeah.
I, I knew Tom Senior, he's the biggest guy in Chandler.
You're talking about physically big?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, he was scared to play football, they wanted him to play football, he was scared to, he was afraid he'd hurt the other kids.
He was freakishly big guy.
Yeah, so.
He could wrap his hand around a football.
Yeah, he could palm a basketball.
Took the back end of my cousin's kid's car out of the ditch and sat it onto the road, and those kids were from Florida, they don't have ditches down there. They were scared to death of it.
Got them all in the Millersburg area there.
Yeah, that was down in Millersburg. But he was a sweet, he's a, he'd do anything for you.
Not the bad mouth, but disrespect in any way or shape or form, but that's the way their whole family.
And he'd give you the shut off his back.
Yeah.
They just moved from when the mines flushed them out of.
Millersburg.
Millersburg, and then came and migrated this way.
That's an update on nuisance properties, uh, two thousand forty-five strategic planning update, um, people are talking about sidewalks and, um, in, 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 uh, stalling sidewalks and walking paths, that seems to be a, a very big thing, uh, walking. And, uh, these people were here just sharing their vision for the retirement community, they're talking about, uh, w- walking paths. He, he detailed more to me than he did here, uh, they wanna maybe even have a place for golf carts to, to drive around out there and walking paths, and it sounds like a pretty nice place. So anyway, I just say that to say that walking's in, be cool, walk, so.
I walked to my neighbor's house the other day.
Oh, my.
Yeah.
Next door?
No. Two doors down.
Oh, okay. And I think there are, or there is rather, uh, grant money that's being applied for to help us to increase our, um, walking in Chandler sidewalks and whatnot, so, uh.
There was some buzz back whenever that railroad shit down, they would donate that land back to the Chandler for walking paths.
That's, that's the number one, uh, goal, is, is, uh, rails to trails, it's a program, rails to trails.
County, Warwick County, Boonville, they're all working on that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the number one goal.
At one time, there were like three principals on the rail company, and two are okay with abandoning it, and one is holding out.
That's, that's, only, the only thing I heard was there's four.
Or four.
And three is ready to give it to us, and one's holding out.
So one's holding out, and that's one of the hardest things to do, to get, get a railroad company to abandon their, their railroad.
There's the goal to develop it all the way from Booneville to Evansville?
All the way to Evansville.
That would be amazing, I would love that. I think that would just impact our community more than anything right now to get that. So there's people laboring hard to make that happen. Something that's not on the agenda that I'd like to get your help with tonight. And I, well, again, I was relying on our projection that I could not get to happen tonight. Scott Lindsay at four one West Madison has basically been doing some building on his property without a permit. And when I went and visited with Scott, he said that he would come in and get a permit. And he did come in, file an application and gave me three pages of drawings on his project. And it really amounts to basically a little lean-to to put firewood in. And then that lean-to does go the length of his garage, I don't know if you can see that or not. And at the back of his garage, he put a lean-to to store equipment on. So I asked him to give me a site plan, give me the information on it, which he did. Again, with all the detailed drawings that probably is enough to, well, I wish some of my home builders would go this detail. But anyway, he is not here tonight because he is dealing with a, well, he's on a heart transplant list. And so he's got some medical appointment that prevents him from being here tonight. But Scott Lindsay would like to have the permit to, well, to finish his project. He has not completed it yet. So I did not issue that permit because this storage that he has going on here beside his garage is, this, this is supposed to be three feet off the property line. And we're assuming it's only two feet. I say assuming because it's not really been surveyed that, that I know of. There's maybe some obvious stakes or maybe we think about where we know where the property line is, but it's not exact. So asking for your help to-
This is budding up to the fence, right?
Yes.
So the, these posts are inside the fence?
No, those posts are, are the fence.
That's what I mean, they're inside.
He has, he has separate posts for the, for the building.
Holding the roof up.
On, on the inside?
It, it's not the post here, just pass this stuff down to Ray.
Well, there was.
Yeah, the, the post-
That's next door.
The post that support that roof are separate, they are not the fence post.
Yeah.
And it's basically just a, it's just a covering for firewood.
Right.
And his thing was, if, he, he said, if we tell him to tear it down, then he'll just put a tarp over it. So do you want to have a tarp blowing in the wind or do you want this little covering? Here, just pass it all around.
I mean, basically, it's just a roof on, right next to the fence, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this is his backyard, right?
No, he's-
That's actually Ray's backyard.
Yeah, he's over on this side.
Oh, okay, yeah, all right.
So the only way it's going to be seen is if you're driving by looking down the driveway, correct?
That ain't mine, that's his. That's his fence.
That's his fence.
No, I'm talking about this line here. It's a poisoned vine, I've got it all over my house.
Two foot, that's his, not Ray's. The garage, the garage were, the garage was, was two feet, or three feet off the line originally. He put the fence up, the fence went, supposedly it was supposed to be two foot inside the line. But if it, if it measures, if it measures where I think it should be, it's only about eighteen inches, okay? Then he brings this stuff over, eh, Ali, from the garage over to the, to the fence. And so now his garage's three, if, if it becomes part of the garage more or less. So now his garage is not three foot off the line anymore. It's only eighteen inches. It's non-conforming, it's, it's, it's just, it's not conforming anywhere down the line. I didn't mind the part on the back end of the garage. The, that, that's towards the alley and it's out of the alley, it's not in the alley. And that's, that's all right, but he didn't get a permit for it. Then he comes up and starts this deal down the side of the garage. Now, how much cotton picking wood is he, I mean, if he's gonna store this stuff up in the, in there, I see right now, I gotta, I'm gonna have termite problems real quick, like. For them termites will attack that stuff and hard telling what'll happen. And I don't know what kind of wood he's gonna put in there. Is it gonna be green wood?
I can't dictate what people put as-
No, I know you can't do that, but that's what I'm saying, you know?
Yeah. We have people who stack wood all over town in places that they have wood piles.
But, you know.
The wood stacked up against my neighbor's, my fence.
Yeah.
Well, just like I say, I-
But it's not really part of the garage, it's just a roof.
It has become part of the garage. It is attached to the garage and become part of the garage.
Off at any time and the garage would still be standing.
That's right, it could be, yes.
Okay.
The, the one on the back could be tore off too and the garage would still be standing. But I don't know what his next project is now. Once he gets this one done, it's hard telling what his next one's gonna be.
Well, it looks like a nice kept house and everything.
I wish he, I wish he was my neighbor.
Jump all around or anything.
One of the, one of the nicer places in Chandler.
All right, let him go, let him go, you're gonna let everybody else go then too. Give me Wagner's number. I'm gonna call him and I'm gonna get the cotton picking line set up.
I will give you cash Wagner's number.
Yeah. I'll, 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 if that's what it takes, that's what it takes. And if that cotton picking fence is over on my side, it's coming down, I'll guarantee you.
Okay. So if it's on your property, it's gonna come down?
That's right. That's matter if it's, if it's not two foot off my property, it should come down.
Well-
According to our ordinance.
According to our ordinance, Ray. I, 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 I understand the, the law. I'm sharing this with you that somehow we might find a little bit of common sense. I think, again, this guy has a beautiful home, I'd love for him to be my neighbor. And when it comes to the letter of the law, you know, this town hall is non-conformant. Our ordinance says that a flagpole should not be higher than the tallest part of the building. So this, this town hall is in violation. My house is in violation because I have a driveway that ends near to my neighbor's privacy fence. And my utility trailer is within three feet, less than three feet of that fence. And our ordinance book describes a utility trailer as being an accessory building. So again, somehow we have to little bit, have a little bit of common sense in what we do. And I, I see what you're saying, I agree with the letter of the law. But, you know, I'd rather, if I was his neighbor, I'd rather have that covering than I would a tarp flying in the wind on a windy day.
All right.
Or just the looks of it.
It, it, what he's doing, what he's doing is a much neater look than what it could be if we don't let him have, have this little covering.
Well, can we require him to put a gutter on this cotton picking thing too on here?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Cause he's gonna run the water all over on my property.
I've told him about that gutter and he has committed to putting a gutter on there and taking that water over to his place. You will not have any water on that side.
Except what falls out of the sky.
Well, I mean, I can't help what falls out of the sky. I hate, I can help, I gotta, what runs off his garage and onto this thing and then onto my property.
Absolutely, Ray, I'm with you there and I'll do my, I'll do everything in my power to make that happen. I'm just-
It looks like I'll have to live with it unless I, my line is over on his, on the other side of the-
Well, then you got all the legal right to tell him.
Yeah, if you're, if that fence would be on your property, then that's another story.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So I did not give him a permit yet because I wanted to talk with you folk, here's the application. So if we finish this application and he has provided us with all the other material we need for that permit, can we go ahead and issue this permit?
Well, I would just caution that if, there is a property line dispute, that he can be responsible for taking that fence down.
Absolutely.
But otherwise, the drainage issue of if I was running, wanting his water on me to-
I wouldn't.
Make sure he puts a gutter on it decent sized to carry it away from his, uh,
Right.
Mr. Jenkins property.
That's what I was gonna say.
Gutter ran down.
Is there any way you can make that a condition for the permit, that he has to do the gutter?
Contingent upon the gutter, contingent upon the fact if it is surveyed and it's on, he'll have to take it down.
We don't have no control over that. I mean, if it's, if it's, if it's on Ray, then that's a legal matter that we-
Right.
That's a civil matter.
When he puts his gutter, I know, I know what's gonna happen there, it's gonna drain towards the, towards the alley. And the guy's property behind me across the alley from him. And down the alley is all lower than what this is. So it's all gonna go in the old boy's backyard.
Just gotta have a certain amount of watershed, don't we?
Yeah, well, you're talking about the sheet flow off of a four by twenty-four structure that's not gonna be very significant at all.
Well, you got all the water coming off of the garage onto this and then off to me.
And it's already coming off the garage on-
Yeah, it's already coming off the garage.
But there was a three foot deal between me and them and, see?
Now it's gonna be piped back to the alley where all the rest of the water goes.
I got a son-in-law that lives over there pretty close too. My daughter's son-in-law, they have, I know the water problem he's talking about on the back corner of their lawn.
Yeah, yeah.
We all do, we all know the problem.
Yeah, it's just a wet area back there.
Yep, well, you know, where elders lived. That's, that's property I'm talking about, it's gonna be in their backyard.
Yep, it's gonna be. No matter what, it's gonna be.
Yeah, he's got, he's got watershed right now.
I don't think he's great anymore water shit, but he put it off a little more on your property, closer to your property than he likes. So if we could get it off back, you know, on his property land and cheat it out. A lot of the kids are offering the permit.
I, 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 I agree with that a hundred percent.
Well, maybe if you make that a motion-
Do we need to?
Make that motion?
Since, since that it's not to the letter of the law, if this board would actually go ahead and make that a motion, that would be better for us, I think.
To make a motion that we issue a permit with the, that he's not on Ray's property and that he does not put the watershed on. Needs to get the order to burn the water away from that side of the property.
I second that.
We have a motion in a second.
Crowley.
Yes.
Cup.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yep.
Jenkins.
Oh.
Whitlidge.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Lemons, yes.
I'm ready for dinner.
You're done?
I'm ready for dinner.
With no further ado, I will accept a motion to recess until the next meeting on Monday, July tenth, two thousand twenty-three at four thirty PM, right here in this spot.
Same bad time.
Mike, you want these back?
I have a motion.
I'll second it.
Oh, do I have a motion?
Oh, I made a motion, it'll be recessed till-
I know, I didn't hear.
Okay, do I have a second?
You got the four plans for the-
Okay, Brian made the motion and you second, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All I've got.
We are adjourned. I'll send them down that way. Oh, you're talking about that house.
I got that.
Kathy, do you know where this place is?
I gotta go look.
I want somebody to take it over there, cause I was still confused as to where it is.
I didn't, I didn't get that page.
Yeah, bring that.
Sure, the only thing-
I didn't get that page.
It's, um-
Foundation plan.
Get a foundation plan for-
Yeah, I was gonna drive by and look at it myself to figure out where it's at.
Well, anybody, you wanna take a ride in my golf cart?
Yes. I can do that.
I would do that, but my brother's on his way over to the house. I really don't have time.
Okay, okay.
I really don't have time.
And we was gonna party.
I'll show you where that was.
Okay.
But my brother's on his way over, we're, we're digging lily pads out of the pond to take over to the lake.
Oh, to take it to the lake, which lake?
The lake we built over on Heim Road.
Oh.
Or our other place.
Oh.